Call this meeting, no order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carried, open forum. There's nobody here unless anybody wants to talk. All right, we'll move on. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills, purchase orders, approval of the investments. There's a couple resolutions. Mowes Dark House and Angling Association, Heartland Chapter gave a donation of $500 to the fire department. A second resolution for $500 from the Minnesota Dark House and Anglers Association, Heartland Chapter towards Mowes Ambulance. And then there is a $500 donation from the Roving Hillbilly Snowmobile Club to the Mowes Fire Department. Just want to thank everybody for the donations. There's a pay voucher number two, community festival license, and a couple gambling resolutions, pay voucher four and five for the HVAC for City Center. Any questions?
Yeah. I noticed the gamblers, not that one so much, but the 4H and I, they were added to the consent agenda, they're pay vouchers for the HVAC system. Has this all been inspected by the engineer? And we got everything that was designed into the plan originally?
We do the last piece that is left. I have, they're coming out tomorrow or Monday morning to program some stuff for the humidifiers. And then they have to fire all this up and condition the air conditioner when it comes on in the summer. They can't do it now. They only do that when the air conditioner comes on, so.
All right. And it was approved by S H saying everything's working the way it is?
Yes, correct.
All right.
Yep.
That's good.
I guess I wanted to add on to that because they're putting in the humidification system, it's going to probably be getting turned off here now in the next couple weeks. How long of a warranty do we have? So if next fall, when we turn the humidifiers back on, is it still under just because we're at that end stage of the humidification cycle?
I believe it is. I will have to, I'm almost positive it is, but I can get that answer and get back to you guys on it.
Okay. Just check with them on that, okay?
And then what I can do is just email out your answer for that.
Perfect. All right, is there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that if you guys are gonna, because Patty's over there, so if I could ask when you guys make a positive or a negative regarding your motions, she needs a show of hands as well, please.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. We're on to reports. Police Chief.
Good evening. February 2020 numbers in our traffic area, we had 22 citations, 79 verbal warnings, two written warnings. For 2020, we had 288 calls. This year, last year was 318. We ended February 2019 with 725 calls, requests for service, and 617 for this year, so we're down about 108 calls for the year so far. 34 agency assist calls. Nothing really stands out related to that. I would believe that our traffic numbers will be down for next month based on what's going on with the virus situation. We do have some precautions put in place for dealing with the public as well as medical situations, those sorts of things. We just wait as things develop, I guess, pretty much daily, at least as of recent anyway. So Colleen's been having a bunch of meetings with us, department heads, keeping us informed of where things are at and what we are to be doing and working towards. And we're just trying to keep not only our employees as protected as possible, but definitely the public when we're having to encounter people. So trying to minimize those situations whenever we can.
Okay, any questions? Is there any questions for you guys? I guess the only thing is, is I suppose next month they're going to be talking to us about cleaning and stuff around the yard, so might not be a bad time to start that already, huh?
Yeah, if the weather cooperates. Granted, it sounds like this weekend's going to give us another bunch of the white stuff potentially, so, but usually late April, early May is when we start our annual inspections again, so if people can get ahead of it, great. It'll save us a lot of time as well as them a lot of headaches if we've got to show up, so.
That would be fantastic.
That's the hope.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
We are on to community development. Director reports, so Colleen will be taking that today.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the year-to-date building permits are 14, including six commercial and eight residential. There's 11 general permits, two mechanical, and one plumbing. Total value is $234,971 so far. Originally, the March MATA meeting had been rescheduled to March 19th, right today, but that actually due to COVID-19 was canceled, so we did not have a MATA meeting. When we go into closed session this evening, there is still a land, possible land purchase that we do want to talk about. And if you want it to go back to MATA, then we can do that a couple different ways. And we'll, when we get to that part, I'll talk more about it. Ed Zimmy with the Central Minnesota Housing Partnership has been administering the city's federal commercial and housing C D B G program. The balance right now for residential is $112,019, and the commercial is $80,012. There's one resident in process of getting approved, and one business who has requested application but hasn't yet submitted it. So we're still, there's still money left in that program for people to take advantage of in the area where it is, has been expanded. And I don't know if we have an update under News Splash on the website, but certainly that's something we can take a look at doing. So with that, that's really the only comments I have relative to the community development department right now, so.
Okay. City Attorney report.
You can see I got two items. I got the one labeled Hector, that's goes over to Craft Drive over by Rose Park. The city's right-of-way easement is actually a great deal wider than just the travel road. We acquired a lot of the right-of-way that was originally taken by the state of Minnesota for '94, and when they discovered they had access, they turned it back to us. So I did a little research and put together an opinion for the city staff about mining, what all does the city have out there? And so you'll see that on there. And then, does that include the right to remove the fence that's been a problem and was put up there by the current tenant? And I concluded that it does. It is in our right-of-way. The other is there's a development, you know, ongoing to put up an apartment building here in town, and it sounds like a good project, but it's getting it to fit on the site and work within our zoning ordinance has generated some challenges. And so, again, I was working with city staff to try to get through some of those items and keep the project on track. That's what I've got so far tonight, unless you have any questions.
Is everyone good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineering report. Good day, Mike.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Kind of an update on some of the projects that we're following up from last year. The 2019 chip seal project, we made, or sent the final pay voucher to Aztec back in October. They finally got their IC-134s, lien waivers, and all their surety documents to us. And I think the final payment is on the list of vouchers tonight in the amount of $3,301.50, so that one should be checked off after tonight. The Conne Road 65 sidewalk project, we're still trying to finalize that out. Worms owes us some of that final documentation yet. I'm not sure what the holdup is there, but I will give Brian another call this week and see what he, if he needs some help with that. So Fifth Street, we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the agenda. We've been doing some staking for the public utilities. There's a, I think it's, is it for fiber optic?
Yep.
Out to the industrial park, we stake some right-of-way out there. Roger is negotiating with some of the property owners for easements. We started some inspection on the Casey South that had a little bit of activity in March and I think, or back in February, and now it's been on hold, I think, for a month, and they're going to start up construction again in April. And also, we did a, some site evaluation for a potential multifamily housing project. I don't want to get in too much detail if Colleen, I'm not sure what we can divulge at this time, but we started working on that, so that's about what we've done. Jody Martenson and her crew has been working on the dam and bridge project. They started, they're working with Jamie Highslop on the stream mitigation protocol. There's a new rule for the Corps of Engineers that the Minnesota Corps is not real familiar with yet, so they're both kind of getting up to speed on that and making some progress there. They submitted the typical section, some supporting documentation to the D N R, and Earth Evans is following up weekly for approval with the D N R. And they've also been working on a draft dam operation and maintenance manual. I don't know that the city's ever had one before, and I think as part of the project, we need to supply the D N R with that. So they're trying to schedule a meeting sometime in the end of March here. I don't know how that schedule is going to be affected with the current situation. But that's kind of where they're at. They're working on some of the preliminary stuff, and when they get some of the hydraulic and channel things ironed out with the Corps and D N R, then they'll be steaming full ahead on more of the design. So that's all I've got for tonight, unless you have any questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
City Administrator report. Colleen.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to defer on my report because most of my comments are going to be contained within the rest of the agenda, and in particular, the item that was added this evening on Resolution 202021. So we can move on to action items.
All right. Action items, Resolution Number 2020-17, resolution of application for the wastewater treatment facility. Any updates?
Yep, so we met with wastewater treatment, Susan Ganzel and Amy Prock from S H to go over the 90% design for the wastewater treatment project. The original estimated construction amount was 11.2. That amount is now up to 13.4. The city will be applying to the Public Facilities Authority for 11.4 million, with the remaining amount coming from cash reserves. Please keep in mind that we also have a request into the state right now for $5,750,000 through the bonding bill. If we were to get that, obviously, the 11.4 is not something that we would need to apply for through the Public Facilities Authority. I, and I've had this conversation, I know I've had it with the Utilities Commission, and I'll say on the record for the council as well, I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with us applying for that large of a bond amount. So I'm very, well, I'm cautiously optimistic that I hope we can get the $5,750,000 from the state out of the bonding bill. And, you know, again, with our cash reserve, then our liability on the bond side would be much less. The Public Facilities Authority is one option that we have to get a loan through them. It's at 1%. It's their Clean Water Partnership Program. There is, because of what the bond market is doing right now, there is also the ability for us to go out into the bond market. What I'm asking from you guys tonight is, this is not saying that we're going to, this is not like setting this in stone and signing on the dotted line that we're getting a loan through the PFA. This resolution is allowing us to make application to the PFA. We are still probably one or two months away from really knowing how the financial aspects of this is going to turn out, and given sort of the state we're in, I'm not sure. So this may even be a project that we put off. But the PFA, I did call them today, and they still are expecting the application March 30th. So I do need the council to please approve this resolution so we can move forward with that application.
And I'm assuming the, obviously, the PFA loan would be contingent on whether or not we get the bonding dollars?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, like I said, I would not be comfortable if we didn't get the bonding dollars. I would never recommend that we bond for that amount through the PFA.
So any other questions? All right. Can someone make a motion to approve, please, for this? As right now?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
She nodded her head.
All right, board appointments. We had two people apply for the Parks and Rec Board. I'll leave it, go ahead.
Yeah, the council determined that we would like to see the Park and Rec Board, I'm sorry, the January 6 meeting, you decided that, or we all talked about restructuring both the Park and Rec Board and the Planning Commission so that we had broader representation from the community. So now we have one member from MATA, one council member rep, and two members at large for the, those boards. So we had, we received two applications, which are attached and in your packet, from Craig Schiffler and Sophia Sabanash for the Park Board. The Planning Commission vacancy is still open. So right now, my recommendation would be that you approve or give consideration to Mr. Schiffler and Ms. Sabanash to the Parks and Rec Board for the three-year term.
I think there'd be great people on the board. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. And I just want to thank these two people for wanting to serve their community. Resolution Number 2020-18, resolution in support of telecommuting opportunities and commuter forward certification.
Any political subdivision in Minnesota that supports and commits to promoting the availability of telecommuting options is eligible for the telecommuter forward community certification, and may apply through the Office of Broadband. To be honest, I'd say I don't know a lot about this because it is a new program that they have. I think the first thing you need to do is just get certified, adopt a resolution, and then, that's really all I know at this point. So you could just say that you're collaborating, you maintain regular communication with the state broadband office, you're making, you know, any telecommuting opportunities available to people if they would like to do that by extending your broadband, et cetera. So it's just at this point a resolution. I think they had talked about maybe in the future, some economic development related to this, but I don't think they've gotten that far yet, so this is the first step. So I would again recommend, Mr. Mayor and council, that you adopt this resolution.
Okay, and maybe, could you provide a summary of what this specifically will do for us?
That's a good question. This is more, this is, and I apologize, Tony, I should know more. Basically, it just looks like, it just is saying that you as, if you're part of this, may apply, the Commissioner, I'm looking, and it's just saying that political subdivision's support and commitment to promote the availability of telecommuting options, provide for a single point of contact, for coordinating telecommuting opportunities, coordinate and partner with broadband providers, realtors, economic development professionals, employers and employees, and other stakeholders.
Okay.
Yeah, collaborate with broadband providers, et cetera.
So this is more from, say, like Mike Nielsen, if weren't him to?
Set up shop here.
Set up shop here, or remotely?
Yep.
Telecommute.
Yep.
So he wouldn't have to come to a council meeting every month?
Mm-hmm.
For his three minutes of time on the podium? Not necessarily from an employee standpoint?
Correct. This has nothing to do with it.
Because when I hear telecommuter, that's what I think of, is employee telecommuting.
Yep.
So this is more enabling other parties, consultants and stuff, to telecommute to town?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
It just tells them that we're a very broadband-friendly community?
Yeah.
And you can telecommute here. So that's something they're heavily going to be promoting.
I'm good with that.
Sounds good.
So you mean you're making a motion?
Making a motion.
Okay, second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. E F T policy?
The state of Minnesota requires that municipalities that engage in electronic fund transfers have a policy for such. We do have some electronic payments that we'll make online, or occasionally wires for investments or other things. Those are all already given to the council and Public Utility Commission for approval. All of the requirements are policies that we have in place, we just did not have it in a written policy. So we're requesting the council to approve the attached electronic payment policy to be in compliance with the state statutes.
All right. Can I get a, any questions?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carried. 2020 street improvement projects?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, plans and specifications have advanced enough for us to be comfortable requesting authorization to advertise for bids with a bid opening date of May 6th at 2020 at 11:00 a.m. Actually, I think we were going to try to bump that up. I think if we get the ad in the paper tomorrow, we can go on April 16th. So, you know, we thought, well, a couple weeks earlier would be better. So we're going to try to shoot for that date, so we're looking for authorization to do that. The current opinion of probable cost is about $665,000, and that includes a 5% contingency engineering, and then about $4,500 in miscellaneous costs for advertising and some other city costs. So we do plan on including about 600 feet of curb to be removed as needed during the project. The public utilities would like to install some conduit at, I think, about six different crossing locations for future use for undergrounding the power. That process is going to require some additional sidewalk removals, so I got to kind of run through those costs with Rogers to make sure that he still wants to go through with that endeavor. You know, I think every time we cross the street, we got to take out one or two panels of sidewalk to get to the utility pool. So with that, I guess we're, take any questions, and then be looking for a motion to authorize WSB to place the ad for bid and the beacon and the financing commerce.
Obviously, this is for Fifth Street North.
Fifth Street North, I'm sorry.
Yeah. The, as far as like the conduit and stuff that they're, they want to put underneath the road, is that something they can directionally bore when they do a project like that?
Um, yeah. I mean, typically, it's usually cheaper when you're doing it with the constructions, you don't have to directionally bore. The sidewalk issue, and that's the one of the thing that I wanted to talk to Roger about, was balancing the directional bore at a future date versus the additional expense right now to take the sidewalk out and replace it, so.
Yeah. Because you don't really, we really don't know when that project, the underground power, would happen. Could be next year, could be 20 years from now.
Yeah, that's correct.
Do we spend the money today to save, you know, the cost of directionally boring later or some other option later, or tearing the street up later? You know, the street might be, you know, partially shot in 20 years, you don't really know. But I hate to, I hate to throw, spend more money than we need to today for a project that may not happen for 15, 20 years.
Yeah, and I'll certainly review those costs with Roger, and certainly he'll make a recommendation one way or the other. And if it's something that we do bid with the project and decide not to do it, it could be eliminated.
And I assume if we do these conduits, we will have somebody inspect doing compaction tests, density tests around those conduits, because I don't know if anybody noticed driving north out of town this winter, but that pass, especially the Mobile Home Park out there, that road is up and down. And talking to Nikki, the theory is that the densities didn't get done possibly consistently around catch basins or storm sewers, maybe possibly, that were put in there or something. But it's really, it's really bad out there.
What street is that on?
County Route 13 going north out of town.
Fifth Avenue going north out of town.
No. That was done.
Some of that can happen from directional boring, though.
Yeah. Well, that, too, at that point.
Do directional boring after the street, some of that can happen during that because they got to make that hole.
Big enough to put.
A little bit big enough to hole, so then that doesn't get filled back in.
Yeah. Typically, that's a pretty small section that gets directionally bored.
Right. But it can cause things like that, too.
If you're putting conduits around there, do you get densities underneath the conduit correctly? I don't know.
Yeah, it is easier to get a better job or a good job, I think, if you're going to directional, direct bury it, because then you can compact around the pipe.
Right.
Councilman said, when you directional derail, you do get some fluffing up of the material around that pipe, and then over time, it will consolidate and drop the street a little bit, so.
I guess I do feel your concerns a little bit there, Tony, too. I mean, if directional bore can be done in the future without ripping out concrete, it's something to consider.
Yep.
Unless the utilities is going to pay for those sections of the concrete, which I understand the city part of it, I do understand that a little bit, so. So I guess you guys decide.
Sounds good.
All right, make your motion all you want, then. Are you going to?
A motion to authorize WSB to place an advertisement for bid.
Okay. And try to get it out tomorrow if possible, would be fine with me, too.
Yep.
So, okay.
That was a motion, by the way.
Yep. Tony Minifair, do I have a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Thank you. An added item to the agenda, Resolution Number 202021, resolution declaring local emergency, local state of emergency. All right.
So just to put this, the whole COVID thing, COVID-19 thing into perspective, last Friday, I had an all-staff meeting, the staff, basically just stating, you guys, we're not going to really make broad sweeping changes right now. What you guys need to do is just follow the best management practices that the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health has put out there. Because at that time, and just so the council is aware, everything that we're doing goes back to what the state of Minnesota is telling us to do in the Centers for Disease Control. So at that time, it was just a matter of, you know, let's be smart about how we conduct business. We then decided that we needed to ramp up sanitation in this building, all the other departments, et cetera, et cetera. That was Friday. I then had a department meeting Monday morning at 9:00, and all of a sudden, everything has changed. And then at 3:00 on Monday afternoon, we had an all-staff meeting again, where it completely changed. So, I mean, as fast as this thing is going, just to put it in perspective, since we have been sitting here, Kirill sent it to me, and then I saw another one. Sterns County is now closing their administration office, their sheriff's department, and one other building. So it's just, we're trying our best to stay ahead of this thing. As always, our utmost concern is for the health and safety of the residents and for our staff, and so we feel that we are taking the proper precautions to ensure that. Just to walk you through our action plan right now, as of March 16th, the public library is closed, the senior center is closed also until further notice. All groups that had reserved meeting space in the city center here have been notified that their meetings are canceled. Right now, the city center is going to remain open, however, we do reserve the right to close it if circumstances change. close it if circumstances change, and it sounds like circumstances are changing quite often, you know, even with the library and the senior center, you know, March thirtieth is just right around the corner, and so I'm not sure what's going to happen after that. So right now, we're encouraging the public to conduct city business, pay bills without coming into the city center building. You know, they can pay by phone, they can do it over P S N, which is on our website, we have a Dropbox for payments, or they can pay by regular mail. Since we have put that in place, our foot traffic has significantly decreased. As of today, I think, how many did we have? Seven, maybe eight total. So I asked at the end of the day, and that's the amount of people that are coming to city center. As I said, we have met in person with staff both last week and this week, keeping them informed and providing resources for them. Staff has been told there is no travel, work travel outside of Minnesota. If they choose to travel for their own, you know, they want to travel, they want to go on vacation somewhere, we are basically telling them that when they get back, they will be quarantined for fourteen days. With the exception of department heads, we are now, we will be completing all staff meetings virtually through either GoToWebEx or through email correspondence. The other thing that we did is we worked with the public utilities departments, and we asked that they look at staggering their shifts, that they no longer get to take breaks at the same time, like they aren't all congregated and ready to take breaks, and that they try and work with two-man crews as much as they possibly can. The public works department has also been in contact with SOC Center, so that the wastewater, water, electric, and street departments for SOC Center and morals are working together to provide that kind of mutual aid. So if our guys go out, we still have the ability to work with them. What's really nice about that is their supervisor worked here for many years, so he does really know our plant, and Gary has always had a very good relate, they've all had a very good relationship together. Utility disconnect, we are suspending that for the month of March. We are currently developing employment workplace modifications, and honestly, I don't know what that looks like. Tessa put together a policy on Tuesday night, and now today we find out it's mute, you know, so that's ever-changing, we really don't know what we're going to be doing with that yet. We are deep cleaning all city offices and have extra sanitation protocols, obviously, as you see tonight. We are following the Minnesota Department of Health, where you have, if you have fifty people in a meeting, that you have to distance six feet apart. We're fortunate, because the city center offices does allow you to do that. Now, tonight, the council meeting is scheduled, the MADA meeting was canceled, we are supposed to have a P U C meeting on March twenty-fifth. I'm not sure that's going to still take place, and then a planning commission meeting is scheduled to happen on March thirtieth. We did send the public hearing notices out for the planning commission, basically stating that we are encouraging people to send their comments or questions, their concerns in via email or calling our offices rather than coming to the meeting. We are putting out updates on our website and Facebook page, and we will be working on getting something on the local cable channel. We will also be talking about a bill stuffer should the need arise for the April utility building. The other thing I, I really want to mention to the mayor and the council is, I am really proud of city staff. We have all very much come together and worked very closely as a team to resolve what is an ever-changing pandemic that we're dealing with, and so they have just been really open, really, really good about all coming together and doing what we need to do to keep everybody protected. So with that, there is a resolution, twenty twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, that is declaring a local emergency. This resolution is based on the closure of greater Minnesota cities. Some, actually, they sent this out, and they are recommending that cities adopt this. I will tell you again, this changes all the time. We just found out Stearns County is closing, SOC Center is open right now, we're open, I think Avon, Avon is open, they only have one window, though, but people, like, they're behind glass. And then I think Albany is staying open, Wade Park is closed, St. Joseph is closed, I'm not sure about Cold Spring. So, or, what's the other one? That's close by, Paintsville, I don't know what they're doing. So, just to keep you up to date, I continually talk to staff about this, and I have said many times, if staff's not comfortable being here, and they just, they simply don't want to be here, we can work with them to try and figure something out. So that's kind of where we're at right now, and I certainly am, I am, I would, yeah, discussion about this, concerns, things that the council or the mayor would like to see us doing differently, you know, closures, I really, I'm looking for some guidance from the council at this point, but I do recommend that we declare this local emergency.
Okay. All right, everybody, Scott.
What is the local emergency expect? I mean, I've, I've read through it here, obviously, it's just brought up tonight, but does it, in moments' notice, give us the ability to declare an emergency?
Well, this is declaring the emergency, so what it basically is doing is it's giving the mayor, through, and then through staff, the authority to be able to make decisions so that we're, there's not a timeline, so that we wouldn't necessarily have to come back to the council and reconvene the council if, say, tomorrow, Governor Walzus said, it's shelter in place, everyone has to work from home, all buildings are getting shut off, that type of thing. So it gives us the ability to be able to do those things.
Wouldn't that be following state orders, then? I mean, do we need this in place? Not, you know, not that, but I, I don't know. Is this really necessary? I guess is what I'm, because obviously, the state laws, I mean, the federal just sent something out today about mandatory F M L A pay. You have to, if somebody wants to go home, you have to pay them their sick time, because they want, they don't want to be at work. I think it's for employers over fifty or whatever, over five hundred or something to that effect. But is this going to be kind of almost like a moot point? Because, you know, like you said, things are changing so quickly, and, I don't know, I guess I'm.
Well, Scott, obviously, Scott's going to address some of this, so that's good.
I, just, I haven't seen the exact language, but I, I think what the resolution is, what it's trying to address is that as a statutory city, it's a weak mayor system. The mayor doesn't have a lot of excess authority beyond just being, you know, another council member, another vote he signs. I think by declaring this emergency, essentially, you're granting on a temporary basis additional authority to the mayor to make a decision and respond, you know, as these recommendations change, because the, the model for a statutory city is that the council makes the decisions as a body.
Right.
And so this is stepping, saying, there's an emergency, we're going to step back from that model and authorize the mayor to make some decisions that normally would require the entire council to act.
Right.
Because circumstances demand that we, we have to have a quicker response. You can call emergency meetings, but I think you'd probably get pretty weary of that pretty fast, and, and I don't know how timely you can respond even with emergency meetings.
I, I would say same day, you know, I mean, there's enough of us around.
Well, I'm just thinking about, you know, to my knowledge, when they declared the state of emergency, they didn't say, and we're going to suspend the open meeting law so that you don't have to notify the press and everybody who are meeting.
Yeah, I don't know what that is, if you call an emergency meeting, is there?
That's all still in place, and there's, even if you're calling an emergency meeting, there's still a notice requirement. So this is streamlining, you know, if something, if a decision needs to be made quickly, I mean, you're, we're not giving Joe dictatorial powers, we're just saying that if a decision needs to be made quickly, you know, staff can talk to Joe, and you guys are okay with that.
My question to you, Scott, can Colleen send out individual emails to get a consensus?
You know, that, yeah, in.
In case of an emergency.
There's, there's volumes of cases, and it had, you know, from the state board that advises on interpreting, and they talk about these email chains, and they're, and basically, it's like, no, you can't kind of, kind of have this email chain to reach a decision, that's considered as circumventing the open meeting law. So this is the approved circumventation of the open meeting law, by saying now.
It, it feels really contradictory. Does that make sense?
Like I say, it's a, it's trying to fill in a gray area, because the, the statutory scheme doesn't give the mayor a lot of power. And we're looking at this as a situation where, for a short time, we want to give him a little more authority than he normally does.
Yeah, and, and not that, and I'm just trying to make a point here, because you give up the power, because the law is saying we have to give a three days' notice to have a meeting, but yet now we just took all the power and we put it in one person who can make decisions. We can't have, even though we have a declaration of emergency, we can't have emergency meetings. It still makes, in my mind, it sure would make a lot more sense to say, under these circumstances, yes, the state statute should say you can have emergency meetings of the council.
It should.
I know, I know that's not what it says, legally, whatever, but it.
When, when the legislature comes back, you might point that out to them, that, you know, it, the, you know, based on the last experience, there, some of the rules they're saddling with us don't serve the state particularly well.
Right.
This is, this is the fix, because we got a statute that is getting in the way of an effective response to the situation.
Could, could you, you know, if we did something like this, if, if, if for some reason I had to make a decision, I can get sent out to the council, and if they do not like that decision, we can still call emergency meetings?
Yeah, and you can meet about in three days.
And, and, no, do, you know, next day, if there is emergency, that, hey, Joe, you're way off your rockers, we need to, we need to stop and rethink.
Yeah, you know, that's, you could still call an emergency meeting, and nothing prevents Joe, if he's, okay, he's been given this additional authority, if he's looking at this decision and says, you know, before I do this, I think I'd like to call, like I said, an emergency meeting and, and get some more input to the council, this is not a step I feel like I want to take on my own.
Right.
But then we'd have to do three days, right? Is that?
I'd have to double check on the emergency, twenty-four hours, yeah. Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get my mind go over.
I, I think this.
What is the situation we're going to run into?
Probably the three days.
Close the perimeter of the city down, or, you know, that type of thing.
Twenty-four hours.
But this, with everything going on, this does give us the ability to cause, like, let's just say, two or three have the coronavirus, can we have virtual meetings?
Yes.
So if you're sick at home, we can at least have a Skype or something here that we can, we can actually make decisions, even though you're at home, you still have the power to make a decision as of right now, that, that will give us that.
Yes.
You mean, you know, that.
But it has to be video and audio, correct?
Yes, yeah, it's got to be, all of you can participate and hear everybody else, so it'd, and you wouldn't necessarily have to come here if it was, you know, didn't make sense, I mean, but I think we would, you'd still have to look at saying we're going to call an emergency meeting, even a regular meeting like this, if, given these circumstances, you could have just had Joe and Colleen here at the table and then have the, the rest of you Skype in, you know, if we could.
Right.
Set it up, so. That was included in the governor's emergency, it triggered being able, loosening up the remote meeting.
Okay, yeah, it sounds reasonable.
I'm fine with that, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're kind of still following state, so we're going to.
And how long does this, how did, how long does this stay in force? Because, you know.
Until the state's emergency thing is done, right?
I think when they declare the end of the emergency, nothing stops you from deciding that, you know, the local emergency is no longer.
Right.
In effect, and we're going to end it sooner. You're adopting the resolution, you can meet and say.
Resent it.
Well, we have to do this again if the, if the feds do something like this, or are we just going to stay on the states?
You know, I, I think once this is in place, because I think that what the, the feds are making, feds mostly just make recommendations.
Okay.
Which then get passed along in the state, and then the state is the one that's actually then issuing directives, so.
Can we, can, if we, when we pass this, because I'm assuming we're going to pass it, but could we put this, so we don't just forget it's in place?
Yes.
Can we just put it on the agenda every month? Just informational, or do we want to address it yet? Do we want to renew it? Do we, yeah?
I would make it expire at the end of this year, so if this gets.
Well, hopefully, hopefully by May, it's, you know.
Well, the thing is, I don't want you to give me that much power that I can screw stuff up before the end of the year. I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, do it monthly.
Yeah, well, or just totally don't forget about it, you know, just a little line.
Okay.
And as long as we're on this, you know, it says in there, you know, it talks about closing meeting places down, bars, restaurants, stuff like that, is that, from my own knowledge, is that mandated right now by the state? So that is not a recommendation, you have to, you have to close?
Correct.
Okay. That's very interesting.
Because it's actually a, yep, it's a, it's a, it's signed by the governor, we actually handed that out.
Executive order, yeah?
Yeah, executive order.
It's kind of interesting that the state can do that by executive order. That's a lot of power. That people want to go to, sorry, it's safe, but if you want to quarantine yourself, quarantine yourself. You want to go down and have a drink, go down and have a drink, but no, can't do that. I don't know.
Okay.
All right, what do you guys think?
I do have, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple.
Okay. Go ahead.
One, a couple things I am looking for the mayor and the council, because this may be something that's going to end up coming up probably sooner than later, especially in light of how everyone is kind of closing down here. And we'll get to something on our agenda that may just make that happen anyway. I want at least some guidance or some sense from you, from you folks, as to what you're thinking about closing city center to the public and what your thoughts are about that.
Is there any interference with people that potentially won't be able to pay online or, I know, I guess you mentioned a Dropbox, so there's really no.
Yeah, there's a Dropbox. Or mail, they can mail their stuff in.
I think people should be able to have access to somebody if Case are having problems with a bill or something. I mean, you know, people do have their questions with their bills, like, hey, I did not use this, or, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, Colleen, if you're thinking like of closing city hall, are you, I mean, how, are we still answering phones, then?
Oh, yes, yeah, you still have to provide access, like building permits and stuff. You still have to have a way to.
Run the city.
Run the city, yeah, so we still need to answer the phones, we still need to figure out a way to get their stuff. I just, and the only reason I'm saying this is, like I said, since we've been sitting here, because we're others, so it may be a situation where, are we like the, kind of like our, the cheese stands alone, I mean, I don't know what we're thinking, so I just would like some guidance from the council as to what their thoughts are. You know, my, I want. You know, my, I want to keep your residents safe and I also want my, the staff here to be comfortable and safe as well. So, um, I just, that's the one area that I would like kind of some, a little bit of discussion about, so.
You're staring the, you know, water, wastewater, electrical and street departments, you know, for straight, you know, you know, do we need anything, for example, if, if you have people working, if you had to do something that night? Do we have to do something, you know, let's just say you wanted to sweep the street at night? I don't have a problem with that. You know, just that you guys can, you know, if, if we can be productive to get hours in and get the stuff done. If it's safe.
Yeah, Gary and his crew.
You guys can do it and, and I don't care if you have to do stuff at night, that, that's fine with me. I know noise ordinance is 10 o'clock if we have to do something to change that. If, if you had to, I mean, within reason, of course, but I know you guys clean the streets in the morning at five in the morning sometimes, but I have no problem with that.
Well, and they're, they're pretty, for their department, you know, they're isolated because, you know, guy hops in a truck and goes, you know what I mean? Um, it's really administration staff that gets the most exposure probably to the public.
Correct.
And of course, the electric department at times could as well. Oh, and that's the other thing I didn't mention as part of the action plan. Yeah, we are suspending those utility disconnects, which most of those we can do remotely anyway, but.
There's a lot of stuff you could probably do over the phone. Or like to me, I ordered a burger at a, one of our customers in Watkins and basically met me by the door, gave me my grub. I think there's ways we can make that work. Like you said, we have these drop boxes if we have to borrow the one for the, the books or something. I, I think.
Yeah, we already talked about that, yep.
Do what we can to keep the employees busy, keep working. But safe, like you said, people can work from home. If we have to lock the doors, we have to lock the doors and we'll find something for people to do. What do you guys feel?
Yeah. Obviously there's, you know, I don't, I don't even know if I wanna go down this road, but there's a lot of businesses laying people off because there's not enough to do. Right? Are we gonna be able to keep employees busy, productive? Is there enough work in this? Hate to say it, but the economy's coming to a screeching halt really quick. And that's gonna affect all, you know, thousands, tens of thousands of businesses. And what we look like economically on the backend of this thing could be an absolute nightmare. You could be looking at it, I don't know, whatever, but it's, it's a little disappointing to see how much we have had to close, how much panic there is out there. Whether or not it's even justified because of the unknowns with the COVID-19. As much as I've read about it, I, I can't see how this is gonna turn out to be an absolute, you know, whatever, you wanna horrifying disease or whatever. Yeah, so it affects a lot of people very negatively, especially the elderly. We should be taking care of them, obviously. But this could be really ugly on the backend. And back to my point is, if, if we are just looking for ways to keep employees busy, is there a time when either we say, you know, if you wanna take your sick leave, you can take your sick leave. If you wanna stay home for a week, stay home for a week. Because obviously the, was it the federal, FMLA just got passed where people wanna go home, you have to pay them their FMLA out. They don't even have to be sick, family medical leave act. If they have a child at home, they can take FMLA, they can stay home. A lot of people have their sick leave built up. I'm just curious, where do we go with? If there's nothing going on, why should we be any different than a business? Because we're a government agency or? And that's a tough question to ask. I mean, I, last thing I wanna do is send people home. But economically, we may, on the backend of this thing, need to make some tough decisions because it's our, our, our economy is, giving me a pretty tough shape when this gets all said and done.
Yep, and, you know, and I believe that those may be tough, those questions are tough questions and they may have to be answered down the road. Um, for, and again, we're taking this day to day. My biggest thing is I really wanna sense from the mayor and the council what your, what your feelings are about physically, you know, locking that door. We're, I, and again, I talk to my staff and they're here and they can probably tell you what they think, you know? Every day I ask them, are you guys still comfortable? You know, is this okay? We are very much practicing social distancing in our offices, that type of thing. Um, and so far, I think we're all kinda here, I don't, but, you know, again, I don't wanna be that city that doesn't, you know, everyone else is closed and we haven't, and then all of a sudden, you know, we get COVID-19 in our, in our city and then the residents are saying, well, you know, city center stayed open so long. I mean, I'm not saying that could happen.
No, nobody wants to be that guy or.
You know?
Okay, so if, if, I guess back, my question, if you do close it.
Up front working, you know, I mean.
Right.
If you can work from home and take, I don't know, can they take their phones home?
Oh, yeah, we have VPN, we have it on sometimes.
But, so I mean, if they can take their phones home, I, I don't see any problem with working from home.
But I think your point is the, if the front door's open, we can't have the staff work from home either, like someone's gotta. So I think you're trying to get around like, what do we do about if someone needs a permit? Is that time maybe suspended or? So people shouldn't be just coming in to pay their bill, but if they're coming in to get a building permit that's timely or something like audio navigator, all those things.
Well, and a lot of other cities that are closed, because there's, almost all the communities in the, um, cities, their city houses are closed. Uh, people are doing it online. They have a little bit more sophisticated systems than we do, but we do have a library Dropbox and we can do it that, um, you know, it could be by appointment, so our staff could still meet one-on-one with somebody who wants a building permit. They just have to make, either make an appointment or we would have, you know, an hour or something. I mean, we haven't gotten that far yet, but no, Minnesota Department of Labor came out and said that, uh, building permits are to still be issued, you know, so we will have to make sure that building permits get issued.
Right, but I'm just saying if we have, you know, two or three people here, that, that, that's their, I mean, they have to be here because of, I don't know, I mean. I, I don't know. I mean, it all depends on your job, I mean.
Yeah, and you know, I'm not so worried about my staff.
We have a lot of people that got to go home and work from home. I'd love to be able to work from home, but that's not my job title.
Right.
I, I don't have that option, so I mean, yeah, I'm still going in people's houses and we're still, I mean, we have to continue daily business yet, I mean.
Well, and ours, you know, our electric and our wastewater are essential, so that, yeah, they.
Right.
And again, it's more, it's balancing, you know, do you allow the public just to come into city center? Business can still be conducted. That's not an issue. I just, again, I am, I just was looking for some direction from you guys. Right now, I think we're, I think we're okay.
What is the trigger for us to lock the doors? What do you guys think the trigger?
Yeah, that's kinda where I'm.
Where, where do you guys wanna shut the doors at? Do you know yet?
What, are there two cases in, in Stearns County confirmed?
Uh, there's three or five.
There's a three, five, no.
There's more than one.
There's three.
There's more than one.
Of course, for every three confirmed, there could be forty or fifty out there that don't even show symptoms.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard call. I don't know.
It's a hard call, because yeah, we could all be done for two weeks and then all of a sudden that two weeks when everybody goes back is when the explosion's gonna happen. I mean, it's just no win.
And I.
I don't know.
You guys do what you wanna do.
I think it's hard because you either lock it or you don't, so the, someone's gonna, like Tony's point before, some people are moving around like it's no big deal, so someone walks in and they just have a common question. They probably shouldn't be here, but how did you stop them from getting in? But if they're here to pick up their paperwork, then they're gonna find the door locked as well, so. You almost gotta either have, like in that entryway, some sort of drop and grab system or a little more, you know, so it could be locked and maybe, I don't know, if you have a certain amount of time, you go check the box and grab.
Well, and the library has a very big drop, so for building permits and stuff, we can actually use the book drop because you're gonna be able to get a lot of stuff in there.
Can those doors, those inside doors be locked?
Yes. The inside can't be locked?
Not that, not the lobby, I mean, we just lock that.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I was.
I hate to back up, so, so we are obviously trying to make a decision on what's the right balance. Does it? Does closing the city center, being, you know, traffic is down, would you say seven people in today?
I think there were seven or eight, yep.
Does closing the city center send a panic message?
Right.
To the public? Do we want the public to panic even more than we're already panicking? Is that? I don't know, I mean.
Could you just make it a notice, like, don't come here unless you, you know, why?
We strongly encourage you to call by phone if you wanna, want, need to have a question.
Yeah, we have public service announcements out there that go through on that.
Maybe even just ramp that up, like, don't enter the building.
Can we, can we make a sign that says, put it on, on the grass coming in? If it's not essential to be here, you must call and schedule an appointment.
Or please call instead of.
Would that feel a little more easier on the employees?
But still have somebody here.
But still have someone here.
I, I still think there should just be, I, I don't, I still think there should be some staff here. I think we can distance ourselves. I think if your, if your job is not to be the person that's sitting up front or, um, building permits and things like that, that well, you might need to be here for that. But if it's, you know, I don't know, I mean, does, do you, Tessa or Patty, I mean, do you, do you have to come up front to? You know what I mean for, you know, so if you're able to work from home, now we're able to distance these people from each other. You can lock yourself in an office and the front person is all by themselves, so they're not gonna get, you know, breathed on and.
Yeah, the only thing I'm thinking is if there's, again, the governor or somebody or the president or the governor said, you know, with shelter in place, because that's what's happened in some other communities.
I mean, if that's.
And then at that point, then we do, we just.
Then we do.
I just, I wanted some guidance on this.
Could, could we, I hate to say it, but, you know, they said socially in six foot distance from first person, could we just put a rope line in front of the front pass so people can?
They're six feet away from the receptionist. They're able to be that far away from her.
Yeah.
No.
I don't know.
No.
I mean, that's one thing about our, our city center is we're, and that's why we can still have this meeting, because we are able to keep those distances, you know?
It's three feet.
It's probably three feet, yeah, it's not quite six.
Technically, you could, let's put a rope halfway's here and go straight out with it. And then whoever's in front, have the people drop it off at that side of the desk. Okay, we'll get it taken.
Well, and Albany's.
We can make it work, huh?
Yeah, Albany's done that. That's what actually Albany has done. They actually have a rope in place. That's how people are doing what they're doing in Albany.
Great.
I hate to close city center, it's, it's.
I would hate to.
Yeah.
Right.
But, you know, and it, you know, like I said, if, if employees do not want to be here, they can take FMLA by law now.
Or if they can do their work from home.
Or possibly that, if, uh, you know.
But I do want.
Come in one day a week or two days a week or from home three days a week or something, rotate staff.
I just don't, you know, I just wanted to be honest. I don't want someone to go home and work for, you know, three hours and be paid for eight. I mean, I, I want them to be fair for the taxpayers' money.
Well, and that's, and that's kinda back to my point is, do we have enough work in this slow time for everybody to be full time?
I, I think we do. Don't you think? We, you have enough, because there's stuff you have to do all the time with.
Yeah, we're behind.
Yeah.
Okay.
There, there's.
So this is, so this is catch-up time?
You know, there's probably projects that we put off since I've been here, even last year I said, oh, well, we're gonna get to that when we get into our slow time. Well, guess what? We've never had to. Yeah, our policies as an example and our contacts as a name too, we, those all need to be updated. It actually would make it much better. Yeah, we have a lot of stuff we need to get done, so.
Okay, so.
Let's do that. Um, all right, that's where we're at, so I guess we're.
City centers to remain open.
I think we're gonna remain open for now.
For now.
And with this resolution, Joe can make the call to close it. And with this resolution, the mayor can make a resolution to close it or.
Right.
Can call it closed if you.
Yeah, I'd probably, yeah, well, we'll be fair and balanced.
And then we can tell you you're off your rocker.
Okay, so, Tony, you make a motion, uh?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Home favorite, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion, okay. Uh, I do have one last question about it, just like with Tony's acting mayor, that will, that puts him on there too, right? If, if I'm not here?
Correct.
Or if I'm sick or incapacitated, it does give him the right, right? Okay, good. Just wanna make sure.
Don't, don't look at me.
All right, well, let's keep this moving, old business strategic, strategic planning.
So you guys had a strategic planning meetings that went very well. It was actually a vision, vision meeting session and as part of that, um, Missouri River Energy Services actually offers the remaining part of this process and that is, um, they're recommending, because what you guys ended up doing was a, you know, strategic planning, kinda more visioning, so now it's kinda putting that all together and then coming up with a work plan. And while I think, um, and it, it, it basically asks what you wanna see in place in the next three to five years as a result of our actions. Then, you know, you guys broke it down into four categories, but, um, then there's the rest of it. As far as the strategic plan goes that you could do, the overall cost is a thousand dollars and they recommend that you do a, um, retreat type of session for two to three hours, possibly four. But then you're done, you know, for probably three years, three to five years. So does the city PUC want to continue the strategic planning process? This is a question that was asked of the PUC. Now, keep in mind, when we had our PUC meeting, we were, where we are today as far as COVID-19 goes, but they felt that we should probably keep going with the strategic planning process. If you continue, you know, do we have a retreat format? The PUC also had recommended that it be a retreat format. And that's where we're at. However, um, you know, again, if we're gonna do something like this, it obviously is not something that's gonna happen until we get through the crisis that we're dealing with now. So um, I guess this is another one where I would like the city council's input as to what they would like to do as the next steps in the strategic plan. Marcy Douglas of Missouri River, River Energy Services, who was the person who facilitated the first step, would be happy to come out and complete the rest of the process for you. For us.
Is this something we can just table?
Yeah, we can table. We don't have to talk about.
Put it on next month's agenda?
Yep.
See where we're at.
Absolutely.
And can we get more info on what, I mean, what they're exactly gonna go in depth with? Because I, I don't know, I just feel like, I mean, we laid out a pile of things and we obviously see where we all thought. I don't know, I mean, what more in depth are they gonna go in?
Actually, that's, that's a good thing. When, when I first was on the council, Tony, you weren't part of that. Were you out at St. John's?
Yeah.
You, you know, we went through that. There was a lot of things we did accomplish from, from that, that time. So it was beneficial, even Eric Sanger didn't agree. He's like, yeah, that was long and drawn, but he felt it was a benefit.
I mean, I think the first one for sure was beneficial. We all saw where.
Yeah.
We thought, okay, when she said we're gonna take people around, what's gonna be the things that are gonna show and obviously recreation was huge, but where other ti, you know, we probably all wouldn't have agreed on that until all of a sudden then, but.
And again, I'm a little, I'm at a disadvantage unfortunately. I was out actually, I had influenza A, so I actually was sick and, you know, Tessa was there, Craig was there, so they, Gary was there, so they could probably bring a little bit more insight into it. But it's really just kind of then, you know, what, okay, so you know what you need to do with recreation, now it's putting together that plan. How do we get there is really what it is.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm just asking, is, I mean, is there some way we can do it without a thousand?
What's that?
Can we do it without spending a thousand dollars and having to take a retreat and, you know, or?
I'm trying to think of, I think we hired, well, the last strategic plan, I thought we did in-house, the actual, we did strategic meetings. But I thought the actual strategic, this is for the actual strategic plan, is it not?
The last, yeah, so the last time you guys did a full strategic plan was 2012, I think.
Okay.
Yep, and that must've been when you were at St. John's for the retreat?
Might've been, but I don't.
I don't know if you were on, I, I don't.
I was at St. John's, I was with.
Yeah, that, you were on that one, then yes. I don't remember when that was.
I don't remember, but, anyway.
We can table it for now.
I think we, I think we can table it for now, maybe get some more information as far as what that next step would look like.
Okay, no problem.
Do you need a motion on that?
Do you, should we bring it back in May? Just maybe it'll be tabled again for now? Well, do you, should we bring it back in May, just maybe it'll be tabled again for another two months depending on everything goes, but just bring it back to life in May? Okay. So there, all right. So we are on to new business, meeting schedule, it's for April 16th for the local board of equalization. And do you guys have any questions? And then the meeting will be at five o'clock to relieve, to receive the 2019 audit report. You guys go, okay with that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carried. Aye. B, that would be for that skylight that we're putting in, so March 30th, 31st and 1st.
So that's actually changed now, due to the fact that the library is closed and the senior center is closed, they, we talked to them and they're able to move that up. So we would actually, next Tuesday, which would be the 23rd, I believe, would be closing, is it the 23rd?
24th.
Or 24th, I can't, I can't see that.
Yeah.
Anyway, they would actually be able to do it next Tuesday and Wednesday and get it taken care of. Because the library is only supposed to be closed through March 31st and they were kind of nervous about being able to be back open on the 1st if they end up going to be back open. So that's nice, but if we do that, I will say those doors are locked those two days. Because the public cannot come in when that installation is happening.
Well, that's perfect timing then.
Yep, that would be good, can I get a motion to approve it then?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Town hall meeting.
And this is another one that you may want to consider tabling, but I just kind of want to give a background on it, we've talked about it before. You know, we've talked about hosting a town hall meeting, obviously in light of the COVID-19 situation. Originally, I had wanted to see if you guys wanted to host this in April or May. At this point, I'm recommending that you look at the fall of 2020. The meeting is an opportunity for the public to get to know city and utility staff and to be able to ask questions about various projects. Now, the disadvantage of, of having it in the fall is like our Molly's Hill project, essentially is probably going to be done. So if anybody from that neighborhood wanted to come and talk, it would be available. But typically how these are set up is we would just open up the dividers and then we would have displays, so every department would have a display and then it's open to the public, people can walk around, they can ask questions, it's a chance for them to interact with staff. So, you know, Tessa would have budget stuff up, Craig would have stuff related to the police department, you know, maybe a fire department have an AED demonstration or something. Gary and Mike would have all of our, like, kind of street project stuff going on, anything with parks and rec, community development. By that time, if we have different developments, they might be able to, you know, show those type of thing. So it's just really an opportunity for the public to be able to ask questions in this format that is, you know, for the public is much less, in some respects, easier than coming before the council, you know what I mean? It's just they get to talk, they get to interact with staff. And then, you know, obviously, we'd have refreshments because always, you know, yeah, cookies and whatever to the mix, you're going to get more people there. Then, you know, that could be like from 4:30 to 6:00 and we had talked about doing it or having it coincide with 4, 4 on the 4th. Now, those meetings right now have been kind of suspended, but if that was put back in place, we could possibly do it with that. And then it would be, so instead of having 4 on the 4th, we'd have this instead. And then, then it would just be welcome and introduction, so the mayor would, or the administrator, whoever would, you know, the mayor would open the meeting, do a welcome. Then all the departments would get acknowledged and you, you know, get introduced. And then you could do a state of the city address if you wanted at that point, you could talk about vision and goals. And then from 6:30 to 7:00, it would be open to the public for comments and questions. And then if, at that point, it was part of a regular city meeting, you could roll, roll into that, but it doesn't necessarily have to be part of a regular city meeting, it can just be this. And that's the only thing that it is, so. That's really what I wanted to talk about. By the fall, depending on how everything goes, we would have information regarding the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and we'd probably be pretty far along with our RDB project, so. That, those are advantages to doing it in the fall.
Well, as of right now, we don't know when we can do it, so, I mean.
No, I guess at this, and that's why I said, you can sort of table. I'm really, at this point, what I would really like to know is, is it something as a city you would like to see us do? That's my, that at this point is my question, we can certainly table it and pick a date at some other point. I just didn't know if it was something, you know, should I keep putting it on the agenda or is there something you guys aren't interested in and I should take it off? That's, that's kind of where I'm at right now, I just want to know if it's something that you're interested in doing.
I think it's fine.
I think it's a good thing we should do, we invite the people in and let them know it's still their city.
Yeah.
All right, that'd be great.
So do we push it to fall or?
Correct.
Or table it?
At the earliest fall, I would say.
What's that?
At the earliest fall, I would say.
Yep.
I would say after this, nobody's going to want to probably come in buildings for a while, they're probably going to want to hang out outside and.
Yep. All right, so we're good there, now we're on potential land purchase.
So, and I didn't do this right and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I would like, and can we still do this? Will the agenda run or do we have to keep in this order, Patty?
Bill, do the informational items.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's only informational.
Yeah. So what we'll do is we'll move D down. So then nine is informational items, that's utility commission meeting minutes, fire department correspondence, schools and conferences, and then four at the fourth, so that's going to be the end for the agenda and we will have to do, close the meeting. So can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, first and a second, on my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion is carried. Okay.
Patty has said it.
Okay, Patty. Do you want to?
Can you go to the microphone?
Yeah, Nazi.
Center of attention.
Okay, so the purpose of the meeting is to consider the land purchase for two parcel, two parcels, 66.36486.0000 or a portion of 66.36467.0000.
And then when we're done with this, we'll, we'll get open and then we'll adjourn the meeting.